Thank you for everybody coming. Okay, first starting with business, approval of minutes from the previous meeting.
So moved.
And a motion for Bill to approve that, a second? Second? Got a second from Ashley, it'll probably be easy tonight since there's only two here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of claims, payroll, comp time, fund, and appropriation reports. Any questions or a motion to approve? Move through. And a motion from Ashley to approve, a second from Bill. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Todd?
I got a lot.
DLC project updates.
Got a lot, so.
I see that.
Go as quick as I can. As far as the road work that is going on for the 2024 streets and the 2025, EMV is working very diligently on that. I'd say probably sixty percent complete. So they have requested Pay App One for the 2024 streets as well as Pay App One for the 2025 streets, which they're working on all of them at once. So everything's looking good so far. Just been happy with it as well. So they are requesting approval for both Pay App One and Pay App One as well. Pay App One for 2024 is six hundred forty-two thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. And then Pay App One for 2025 is one hundred and eight thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents.
So move to approve 2024 Streets Pay App One and 2025 Pay App One.
I have a motion to approve the 2024 Street payout, six forty-two, nine forty-eight, eighty-nine. And the 2025 Pearl Street payout, Pay App One, one hundred and eight thousand six forty-seven, eighty-one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ashley. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next set of road projects we're getting ready to bid out, they will advertise the end of this week and next week. And we will take bids on June third. So that's coming along very good. The next one I have is the Coldwater Sidewalk Project. Project is complete. API has, and the grass is coming in. API has submitted Pay App One for two hundred twenty-five thousand thirty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. We get them to hold retainage on that. But the grass is looking really good so far. So pending a walkthrough later is when we'll wrap that one up. So Pay App One there is being requested.
Okay, we're working at a Pay App One, two hundred twenty-five thousand thirty-nine dollars, thirty-two cents. Do I have a motion? Got a motion from Ashley, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Bill. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then the Hope Drive Sidewalk. We had held five hundred dollars in retained issues for TNS concrete to do the restoration seating. He's submitted that, the last five hundred dollars, he's submitted a payout for that. Question is, is do you want to wait till more grass comes in? Or do you want to pay it and fill it out?
I would move to wait because the grass is not growing.
Agree? You're not opposed to anything that's stated, so.
It is a nice day between the two projects.
Yeah, I agree. And we've had a good spring for.
Yes, we have.
Grass.
Put it on hold.
We'll, okay, we can hold that for next meeting. I will contact him and tell him to get grass grown. Other than that, that's all I got for that. Any questions or anything else? Still working on a lot, so.
That's just a quick time.
Sure.
Good job.
Thank you.
Next item is ordinance 2025-06. This ordinance is referencing downtown apartments, ground floor, first floor, below or on that apartments. Do I have any questions on the ordinance? Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
So move to approve ordinance 2025-06.
Okay, I've got a motion for ordinance 2025-06. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That completes the old business, let's new business. Utility credits.
Just your normal monthly credit this time.
Normal monthly credits. Do I have any questions on those or a motion to approve?
Move through.
A motion from Ashley to approve utility credits. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second from Bill. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is CF One for Cardinal IG. But first, before we do that, I just want to say, I went to the Steuben County Economics Development the other day at home with Kathy. And we were told the International Economic Development Council announces that the Steuben County Economic Development Corporation has been recognized as one of eighty-seven economic development organizations accredited by the IEDC as an accredited economic development organization, which is commendable.
Thank you.
So we just. That's the press release.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Fulton, Kathy, for attending that event. And just a day prior, I think, Bill and I were on the quiz team. It felt like actually the test group.
The test group gave him second.
Gave him second.
We tried.
We tried. He said final answer.
He carried the team the whole way. So yes, I'm before council today to present the last set of CF Ones. I believe, to my count, I have seven. I was working with Cardinal IG folks. Mike apologized again up and down, he could not make it tonight. We will be with him tomorrow. There was an email with some additional information. Kathy, I hope that you'll share that with council after tonight's event if they haven't already received it. Just a few of his remarks. He also did commit to coming to a future council meeting or hosting you on site to have any other future conversations or questions answered. I'll go through these by section. Councilmember Fulton, however you want to approve those, you let me know, but I'll go through them each one individually and then you figure it out.
You just do your thing.
All right, do my thing. Will's next, so I'm trying to go fast. All right, so the first one I'm going to do is Real Estate Resolution 2016-04. This one, I reviewed the numbers and really the thing that stands out on all of these is where their total employment count is. I understand and look at these things in the scope of the full breadth of the tax abatement. Want to see progress. In this case, you'll see a number below what's been committed to, including the new jobs. But I will stress and take a look at, or how to take a look at the payroll number in terms of what was committed to in the SB One versus what is actually paid. We have seen a number of our tax abatements in terms of what they projected their payroll to be based on the SB Ones and where it's at today be a lot higher, which is a positive thing. You see that in your CETA collections, part of the general fund that you guys collect across the county. So I want you to pay attention to those, part of Mike's comments and I'm sure questions that Mike will be able to answer will relate to the difficulties of trying to find and retain people as well as replace natural attrition. Those are some common themes we also have seen over the last year or so on these CF Ones. So in terms of this one, again, looking at their overall numbers and where they're at based on the number of new payroll that they have assigned to this project, it is my recommendation that 2016-04 Real Estate is in compliance. You have the final say. You want to take them one by one or?
Nope, go ahead. Because I think the other thing we can do is make it one motion.
Next one is the same resolution number, but this is on the personal property side. So this was for the actual equipment, the manufacturing equipment estimated to be at the time about two point five million dollars. It was tied to this project. It was tied also to the real estate. Again, same explanation I had before. Moving on into the 2018 expansion, similar type of project where you have two abatements, one on the real estate side, one on the personal property side, same resolution number. This was an expansion for the production line. Total equipment purchase on this one roughly was, where is it at? Looking at twenty-seven million. This was one of the larger ones. So again, taking a look at the numbers on the SB Ones at the time, they recorded three hundred. They're just under two, or at two sixty today, but well over the estimated payroll amount. Both of these, considering their track record and considering the explanation provided by Mike, I've recommended to be in compliance. In 2019, you had a similar environment, but one of those has expired, the personal property side. This is where we made some modifications. The town of Fremont is actually the first one to do so, to where we shortened up, really to the depreciation schedule, the personal property abatement. So now they match pretty parallel, about five years on the personal property side. So the personal property one has expired. I made note of that in the recommendation I provided to Kathy. So the 2019-04 Real Estate still is in existence. Again, this is an expansion upon expansion. You saw it started in 2016, went to 2018, 2019. Of course, you drive now by the building. It looks like a long singular process, very fascinating process it is if you haven't been in there. But again, this one is very similar in terms of the explanation provided. Obviously, on real estate, when you see real estate abatements, it's easy because you can see the buildings go up. It's typically new, new space. So we do see that. We are making note again on all of these that we, along with the explanation that Mike provided, we are watching kind of a trend line up in terms of total employment. But for 2019-04, I recommended it to be in compliance as well. And then the last, no, sorry. I have to make sure my shoes are ready. The last one that's double. No, I guess they both are. Those are new though. The last two that are double with the same resolution number, you have a Real Estate Improvement 2020-05 and a Personal Property of the same 2020-05. Looking at this project, again, this was the, this would have been the expansion to secondary line, internal line that added some more robotics based on my notes. New information technology equipment as well as new logistics distribution equipment. This was a large part of how they re-aligned their internal process for the flow of intake of class down to the end result where the product comes out and it's insulated. So the project itself being internal, SB Ones reported two hundred seventy-two jobs. Again, as all of these have stated, they're at two sixty, paying roughly about fourteen point one million in terms of overall salary. So with that being said, again, with the additional notes that I provided, I recommended those to be in compliance as well. You have two that aren't on the books yet, Resolution 2022-01, because the project's not complete. So in my notes to Kathy, there's nothing to approve on those because the project's not complete yet. I do anticipate those to show up in next year's rundown. I normally would say Mike would handle all the hard questions, but he's not here tonight, so I'll do my best to answer any questions you might have of me.
Any questions for ICA? In all of our compliance?
All of these are, yes. And based on my Bible here, this is done. We are done for 2025 CF Ones from the town of Fremont and honestly for everybody else. Eleventh hour, because they have to be to the session by the fifteenth Thursday.
Okay, CF Ones for Cardinal IG, do I have a motion to approve them all? So. Have a motion from Ashley, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Bill. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you again next year on this at least.
Next on the agenda is the county agreement. Will Howard is here to educate us, correct?
I'll do my best to do that. I guess I'd like to know how much information you really want. I was in front of you approximately a year ago, I believe it was, and presented to you our presentation regarding the Engineering Service Agreement that we were seeking with NIPSCO, a lot of back and forth over the past year, some really uncomfortable feelings. But starting late in January, after having had some meetings with the governor directly and some of his staff members, and then a secondary follow-up with his Secretary of Energy, I believe the county, after having had those discussions, felt more comfortable executing the Engineering Service Agreement and committing taxpayer dollars to a resolution for bringing additional natural gas to Steuben County. And I can, I probably don't need to mention this, but I will, but no one, no one community probably knows the need for it more than Fremont. Because you were the first to feel the pain of lack of natural gas service in our county. So where we're at right now is asking that the entire county participate in the Engineering Service Agreement, the cost of which is one million dollars. The county, and with help from the EDC, has put together a proposal that we share that one million dollars based, just so we have a standard number off of population census data, which would put the town of Fremont participating just a little over fifty-nine thousand dollars. Payment wise, the county is taking the lead on this and then you would in turn be billed quarterly by the county for your portion of it. The Engineering Service Agreement was sent to you, I believe, by the Commissioner's Assistant, Adam Teller. And it's, hopefully you've got the final copy. Most of the ones I have still have makeup or markups on, excuse me. But we tried to make it as simple as possible. It's an agreement that you can enter into and exit into at any time. And you can choose to participate at whichever level you choose to participate at. But we have the suggested participation rates that have been provided. So really, alls we're looking to do is to make it official that the town of Fremont would like to participate with us.
Okay, so open for questions, and I do have a question. When you read the agreement and it shows that it's supposed to be completed by December thirty-first of 2025, and the price tag put on this was a million. It's taken with Steuben County, city name, Hall of Town of Fremont, Hamilton, Ashley Hudson, Orland, and Clear Lake as far as taking that million and splitting it up percentage-wise. And we did pay fifty-nine thousand sixty-seven dollars eighty-one cents would be Fremont's portion. The biggest concern that I would have is it makes reference into what happens if the costs exceed the not to exceed portion. So let's say it's another two hundred thousand more. What happens to that two hundred thousand? Does it come back and cut it off percentages to each and every one of those listed? Or does the city of Angola or Steuben County pick it up? Because our fifty-nine thousand is, that's Fremont's limit as to what we're going to pay if we agree to this. So that's the biggest concern I have. Is that a thought?
It is. And then the other thought is what happens if one of the bigger players declines?
That was my thought as well. And then that percentage doesn't equal out to come up with the million dollars?
That's correct. So let's take this maybe in stages. The first item being that Steuben County, as an entity, signed the contract with NIPSCO and we agreed to pay all of it. And we can enter, we can exit this at any time we feel it's not in the best interest of the entire community. If we choose to exit it at any point in time during that, any other entity is welcome to step into our place. So Fremont could take it over, Angola could take it over, whomever wanted to step up and do that. The caution being there is if, 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 or, excuse me, if Steuben County is wanting to bow out, there's probably a pretty good reason why. And you would probably take that into consideration, I would hope, when you were making that decision. Second part, it is an open-ended contract. It could go higher than that. Not going to fidget you. Right now, Steuben County has committed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've appropriated that much. The city of Angola has agreed to participate. I'm in front of you this evening. Hamilton has agreed to participate, albeit Clear Lake next week. I've yet to be in front of the other municipalities yet. So at any point in time though, you can bow out without any penalties, without any additional costs, without reservation for your commitment to this. We're still going to carry forward with it because the county needs it.
But if we want to participate, just like this is all done, like I say, it goes a little bit over, then the county's already appropriated extra money to pick up that overage?
Yeah.
And it's not something you come back to Orland and Hudson and Ashley and Fremont and ask for more money?
I don't anticipate that happening.
You're actually swearing. Maybe swear on this?
I don't anticipate that happening, but you can always say no. And that doesn't mean you're not participating. That doesn't mean you're not funding it. I'm still happy to have the support and the backing without the funding. And that's why I tried to make the entry into it and the exit from it as easy as I could for every municipality.
Okay, that answers my question. Do you?
No, no, I mean, right now there's no clear indication that this is, the study's definitely going to benefit the town of Fremont. But that's why you got everybody involved to figure out the study.
And I see where everybody's open to get the information and to participate, et cetera, et cetera.
I will tell you, there will be two levels of information provided. One will be public, one will not be public. Again, it's a private entity and they have the right to their priority, proprietary information. I would imagine some of us will be signing NDA, our non-disclosure agreements, so that we can see the detail of it, but there will be public information available so you can see how things are progressing as we go forward.
So we will be kept well informed?
Absolutely.
To a certain extent?
Yeah. To the extent that we, of the information that's non-public, yeah.
Quarterly payments start?
We've already made the first one, so upon execution and receipt of it, you'll probably get a bill shortly thereafter. And those will be invoiced out of the auditor's office.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
And we can appropriate?
We budgeted for your questions, yeah.
So to be part of the county-wide NIPSCO agreement?
Okay, I've got a motion, do I have a second? Second. Second from Ashley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. Joe? Part-time hire?
I didn't remember that. Go past Travis.
Travis?
Yes. We're looking at, to hire, be a, basically a training deputy to help train us, basically, some of our ground finding or native tactics. He comes with a great background. He does that for his own department right now. He did it for Steuben County's Sheriff's Department. So I think, again, if we can get to hire, I think it benefits the police department's management.
And we have the hours for it now, for him?
Yes, yep.
And you have the money for it?
Correct.
Correct. So do I have a motion to approve a part-time hire? Go ahead, yes?
If I missed it. It's Joe's brother, I.
Correct.
Okay. If he's going to be under the chief deputy, who's over the chief deputy?
That'd be, that'd be me. Our policy is set that the chief deputy is in charge of part-time.
But you're in charge of the chief deputy, right?
Correct, my law, yeah.
Right, so. So that's still a direct line of supervision. Little concerned about some anti-nepotism issues there. Is there any way that this position could be a part-time independent contractor under the supervision of the town council? Do you want to win that?
I suppose it could be.
Because the second would be just for training purposes, right?
Correct. The big, him coming in to help train where my body just can't handle pounding anymore, so he's, he's young enough that he can.
But he's not going to be out on the street, he's not going to be any of those things, it's just for training purposes?
Yeah, just for training purposes is what we need, truly need him for.
So.
He's kind of a contract employee, but.
That's kind of what I have vision two is.
So ten ninety-nine is what you're suggesting? In all part-time officers, are under the chief deputy policy lives?
But that's still Joe, the town marshal's over top of the chief deputy. So you have to be off to the, you know, it'd have to be somebody else over the top of the. Broker.
So you want somebody in between these two?
Well, I mean, there would be somebody in between. You have to have it to where Joe wouldn't be in the direct line of supervision. He wouldn't have, he wouldn't be able to be under Joe anyway. So if you had an independent contractor who's coming in to train your police department that you guys as the town council would be supervisor of, and independent contractor like ten ninety-nine, then that wouldn't have any, there'd be nobody in the police department that would be over this independent contractor.
So therefore, if he's under Travis, if there's an issue, then Travis would come to the town board versus going to you?
Well, it doesn't sound like he would be, he would just be an independent contractor, so ten ninety-nine, so he wouldn't have a boss other than you guys saying you want him. I don't have an issue with that.
I think that would clear things up, should anything happen, nepotism can be a real slippery slope.
Yeah, and if any of, anybody in the police department had an issue with it, then they would come to you guys and you guys would be in charge.
So move to hire a part-time officer with the council as their.
Independent contractor.
Independent contractor with the council being their supervisor.
Okay, so we have a motion to do it as an independent contractor. Do I have a second? Second from Ashley. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item of business is authorization for the permitting process ordinance.
Yeah, we'd like to be able to assist towns having a rideaway of permitting process ordinance so that any utility or anybody that's working in your rideaway, we have to go through the same process to get approval through the town.
Any questions on that? Do I have a motion to approve for the permitting process ordinance? Motion, I have a second. Second by Bill. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The appraisals came back for the property down there. The, of the two of them. The appraisals came back for the property down there. The, of the two of them, he has refused it, but we'd like to maybe do an authorization if he comes back and stoops on it and decides to sell, that I have authorization to sign a purchase order and/or I can also go to the sale. So what do you think?
So move to give you permission outside the meeting to sign any paperwork?
All right. Got a motion for an authorization to sign a purchase order if it comes to that because we as a town can only go up so high. And also authorization to go to the auction. Do I have a second? Second by Ashley. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Just a couple of comments. Remember, spring cleanup is Thursday on five fifteen. And we also are getting ready, hopefully this week or next week, we'll be putting up veteran banners in the town of Fremont. We started out with the thought if we could get at least seven or eight, we would do well. Well, we ended up with thirty banners, sixty veterans. So they're going to double side again, don't go up because we only have thirty-two poles. So it was much more than what we thought.
Correct.
Kathy Jemusley sent me a picture of my husband today and I thought they were wonderful, so did very well. Anything else from anybody? All right. Move on to reports.
Yes. Fire department. We would like to get approval for the repair set in twenty-two, which is about eleven thousand dollars approximately.
So move to approve the fire department. So approximately eleven thousand dollars for a repair.
Okay, got a motion, do I have a second? Do I have a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Police.
Nothing else to add unless you have questions. The cars were just waiting for the warranty. They get the headlights fixed on newer vehicles, some of the radio equipment down with the school. I think we're working together and trying to get some of the equipment to, by referred radios to get us to last there for, hopefully about five years. And then we'll see what cost in the future we'll have to put in for townwide for the fire department and police department for upgrading our radios in the future. But this will get us by hopefully for that four to five year time period.
Need approval for cameras?
Okay.
So approve the purchase for refurbished portable radios not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars?
Second.
Got a motion, got a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning?
Nothing to add unless you have questions.
Busy, we're driving around, looking at things, keeping things cleaned up?
Trying.
Sending letters? Okay. Street department?
Uh, just one thing to add. I'd like to get approval for the sale of the older bucket truck that was replaced today.
Do I have a motion to authorize the sale of the bucket truck? So move. So move. Got a second? Second by Bill. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You can sell the bucket truck. Put it up for a minute.
Right.
Water? Waste water? Parts?
Nothing bad.
Nothing to add? Anything else? Thanks for coming, Tony.
Thanks for having me.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, I have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.